Okay, we're going. Sheila, thanks for paying attention to us. I appreciate it. We got the recording going again. I think it's time since it's 6:05 to get the meeting started. Want to really be sensitive to Elliot's time. So that's okay. We have a quorum for the Federer, not Federer, but Federer. Yep. Did someone have a question?
No, I was in my mind is wondering, you're the chairman, but I think when we get to the project, start discussing it, I could start it with kind of where we're at.
That would be great. And so we'll do that in just one second. So on our agenda, our old business, the first item there is the Federer application for William and Laura Federer. At 163 Burton Woods Road, map 37 lot 24. So having said that, Rich, do you want to take it from here? What I will do is go over to some of the forms that we have, and I could going on some of that information.
Okay. Yeah, because when it comes down to voting and doing the findings of fact, I guess what the have you take the lead on that part? But this feeder application, as we've dealt with this in earlier meeting, which we then tabled at the time. Most importantly, because there was an issue about the height of the structure. And the ordinance requires the height of the structure to be 25 feet or less. And Elliot's proposal, as we saw it, was more than 25 feet at the time. We did a site visit to the property and saw the property, saw it, but we also say. Oh, we had a last planning board meeting, we met, the whole board discussed the issue, or at least the whole board that was in attendance, discussed the issue of building height. And we chose to continue our position of measuring. And I'm assuming that Elliot has gotten that message either from Gary or somebody that we chose to stick with the front of the deck, the closest part of the structure. And the rationale there is, I know it's different than what Colin had said from DEP. But the rationale is that accessory structure definition says a deck or whatever attached to the structure is part of the structure. And the definition of height of a structure talks about I'll put this right, that any part of the structure has to be 25 feet or less. And because, because the deck is attached, we've taken the position that that's the 25 foot height limitation. And so anyway, that's kind of where we're at. And we received your additional information. Elliot, and I guess my thinking is at this point, we can have Elliot go over what the changes he's made since the last time we met.
Okay, I can do that, Rich. So the last time you met, and actually I was monitoring that meeting. So I listened to the board's discussion on this question of where to measure the 25 foot height from. And so, and I understand. So what I've done is on the site plan that you now have, which has a revision date of May 11. I've added a couple of things. First of all, at the front of the deck, the lakeside of the deck, I show. I'll continue. At the front of the deck, the lakeside. Elevations of existing ground. So. The existing ground at the northwest corner is, you see, is 253. And the existing ground at the southwest corner is elevation 254. So the mean of that is 253.5 at the front of the deck. So I added note five to, to cover the height limitation. So note five says the maximum height of proposed cottage above the mean high grade of 253.5 at the downhill side of the proposed deck shall not exceed 20 feet from 25 feet to 75 feet from high water mark and shall not exceed 25 feet from 75 to 100 feet from high water mark. The cottage plans that you have, the, their dimensions do still show roof height that it would, would exceed that. What, what the feeders are going to do is work with ham and lumber to bring that roof height down to the maximums that are specified in note five. So please use the building plans more of a concept as the final dimensional plans. The footprint will stay the same, but the height will conform with those limitations. The other thing I've added, when we were out on the site for the site visit, the slope going up from the back of the cottage up toward, oh, the existing parking area and where the leach field is now has a large open graded area. So I've added a note, and I think I understood the board when we were out there to plant six four foot coniferous or deciduous trees or shrubs in that area. And I just, in general, point out that area. So we didn't pick exact locations, but the number of size of plants are specified. So those are the modifications we've made since our site meeting.
Well, thank you. And I think you've addressed the issues that we had concerns about. The only thing we might have to do is some kind of condition that says the the side view drawing on the application is not. Part of the application or somehow George might be able to come up with a good, a great wording for such a thing. But as far as the issue and our understanding of the issue, I think, at least for me, I fully understand what you've done. Any Sarah or George have any other comments?
The only thing, other issue that we looked at during the course of the site visit, and I believe we were, all three of us were satisfied was that the camp is being moved back to the maximum extent practical from the, from the normal high water line.
And the other thing that came up in the discussion was the shed and whether or not that was moved back to the greatest practical extent. And I think we agreed that it probably was. And I had made the comment that if in fact it was moved back to the greatest practical extent, it's kind of a rundown shamble kind of shed that he could reason we get a permit to rebuild the shed on that same location that has been removed.
I might not withstand the moving process.
And Rich, note, note also that that relocated shed is beyond the 100 foot setback.
Okay, okay. Yeah, that's correct. Yep.
So Rich. Yes. Rich, I just wanted to make sure I verbalized something that Sarah put in the chat, which she said, no comments from me. She just said.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure you hear that.
Yeah, excellent.
Yeah, I think at this point, if there's, if Elliot and Georgia or Sarah don't have any comments, I think we're prepared to deal with the findings, in fact, on this project.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Great. I'm trying to keep one eye on the chat and it looks like Sarah says, yes, let's do that. So if it's okay with you, we can go to the finding. Yeah. Do you want me to read through that? And then?
Yeah, if you can do that, because I don't have the paperwork here. And Elliot will do this at some point.
So Elliot, I think you've probably seen us do this once, maybe or twice, where we go through the findings of fact. So it takes a little bit of time, but we'll try and get through it as efficiently as we can.
Okay, sure.
Okay, thank you. Alrighty, just one moment here.
Peter is looking, trying to do what he's doing. I'll mention to everyone here that I've been, was kind of delinquent in talking to Colin about this whole issue. I need to still do that. I called and he's won't be back until the 24th, but I waited too long to do what I was supposed to do. And I apologize for that.
Thank you, Rich. Appreciate that. So what I did was I just grabbed the language, some of the, the basic language we use and have copied it. That way I can paste it in as we go through to make it as efficient as possible. But we go through some, some things at the start. So this is the, this is the Belgrade Planning Board findings of fact and conclusions of law. This is for the application for a shoreline permit by the applicant, William and Laura Federer or feeder. Address is 163 Burton Woods Road. I have tax map 37 lot 24. The applicants on date, and where we input the date, have applied for a shoreline permit for, in this way, put the project detail. So that was demolish and replace existing residents. Is that appropriate, Elliot?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay, then the next line, the application was presented to the planning board on what date members, did we first hear this?
April 20th was the first meeting. And we conducted the site visit, which was also official meeting on 4/27. So I guess it would be 4/20, 4/27, and then today's date.
Today is 5/20.
Right.
I have 4/20, 4/27, and 5/20, all in the year of 2021.
Correct.
Next is the conclusions of law. So based on the application materials, testimony, statements, evidence, documents, and other materials submitted to, to it above findings of fact. We'll go through this, Elliot, and it's a what is it? Seven single items, and then the eighth one has, is relative to a number of standards. We do a roll call vote. So ask for your indulgence as we go through that.
Okay, not a problem at all.
So this has to do with let's see now, I had read, based on the, upon all the material, testimony, statements, evidence, documents, materials submitted to it, and the above findings of fact, we're planning board finds that the project is or is not permitted under table, under section 14, table one in the ordinance, and further makes the following conclusions based on the applicable provisions in section 16D of the ordinance, where number one is, it will maintain safe and let Anthony in. Will maintain safe and helpful condition. So we'll do a roll call vote. So welcome to Craig. Craig, just so you know, we're on the the William and Laura Federer application, which George, Sarah, and Rich are the voting members on this one. I think neither you nor I were part of the whole discussion, so we would not be voting. And we're just doing the findings of fact right now.
Yeah, that's fine. I know I was going to vote.
Okay. Right. So here we are with maintain safe and helpful conditions. So may I do a roll call vote first? Verbal. Or Sarah's already said, yes. George.
Yes.
And Rich.
Yes.
Yes. So I'm going to say three in favor.
Peter, a quick question. I wouldn't pay any attention as well as I should have. In the blank above number one, where the project is or is not a permitted use. It clearly is a permitted use. Did you get, get that?
I didn't yet, but I'm glad you said that because I didn't want to overlook that. So I will write in that and say, is, just use the words, is permitted.
I agree with that.
Thanks. And so we took a roll call vote on number one, and I said, three in favor, none opposed. Then we're also using the language. Application submittals and public record. Number two, that it will not result in water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation to surface waters. Board. I'll go to George first.
All right, yes.
Rich.
Yes.
And Sarah says, yes, reading what she's writing in the chat, just so everybody understands. And it's part of the recorded minutes here. So just so you know. So thank you. Thanks, Sarah. And then same language on this one. Three, will adequately provide for the disposal of all wastewater. The board found the standard was met by favor of, so George.
Yes.
Rich.
Yes.
And Sarah says, yes. And I'm using the same language based on application materials and public record. Four, will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat. The board found the standard was met based on on the applications middles and public record. So in favor of, so George.
Yes.
Rich.
Yes.
And Sarah says, four, yes, so. Five, will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland waters. The board found the standard was met. So George.
Yes.
Rich.
Yes.
I see Sarah says, yes. Six, will protect and will protect archaeological and historic resources as designated in the comprehensive plan. The board found the standard was met. So George.
Yes.
Rich.
Yes.
And Sarah says, yes. In favor. None. Number seven, will avoid problems associated with flood plain development and use. The standard was met. George.
Yes.
Rich.
Yes.
Sarah. She says, yes. And number eight, this has to do with the land use standards. So this takes a little bit more time. So a minimum lot standards. Is that not applicable? Or what's the best wording for this?
I would. My thought would be it is applicable, but it's met.
It's met, okay. And.
I'll say yes, too.
Yeah. So, so it is met. What's the best wording for these? Because there are a number of these things to go through. And as I recall.
I think some of these are going to be not applicable, like campgrounds and, and those kinds of things. And then I think the basic language that we've been using, Peter, will work with one exception, and that is B, principal and accessory structures. This is where the move, moving back to the most practical extent and the 25 foot height limitation come into play, or at least that's where those standards are located in the ordinance. And I was going to suggest that we use a slightly different language for the basis of, for finding in favor of that.
Okay.
I'll read that to you when we get to it.
Sure. Thank you very much for, for that. So for this one, so for minimum lot standards, are we just saying based on applications middles and public record? Do you want any other thing there?
I don't, I don't, I personally don't think it's necessary. It's just the B where I think it'll be appropriate.
Okay. Other board, planning board members are, see what we're asking about or see what we're talking about. Basically, okay, great. All right. So going forward, then the next standard has to do with, or land use standard has to do with B, principal and accessory structures. So I'm ready, George, if you are ready.
Yeah, I, I think we need to reference the revised site drawing. So specifically, and so I was going to suggest we use language, something like based on site visit observations, the revised site drawing of May 11, 2021, and the public record.
Excellent.
So that captures the note five that Elliot mentioned earlier.
So I've, based on site visit observations, the revised site drawings of, and you had a date.
Was May 11, 2021.
And so based on the site visitor observations, the revised site drawings of 5/11, 2021, and the final phrase.
And the public record.
Okay, that's the way it reads right now. Next is campgrounds. So that would be, are you thinking, NA? Then next D, individual private camp sites.
Not applicable.
E, commercial and industrial uses.
And A.
Parking areas.
Guess I'd say yes myself. It's, it's appropriate parking involved here.
Okay. Roads and driveways.
Likewise, there.
So based on application material, application seminoles and public record.
Right.
H, signs.
That would be an A.
I, stormwater runoff.
That would be the standard basis statement.
J, septic waste disposal systems.
You know.
Same. Essential services.
And A.
One thing I point out, just so people know what essential services are, they're essentially the power lines coming down to the structure and things of that nature that is what they fall into.
So am I wrong then, Rich, that?
Well, I think technically it's technically, yes. But it's not something that involves in this particular project, other than the new house will have a power line slightly different location.
Right, yeah. I don't know why I had it in my head that that was mostly, you know, not so much to the house, but you know, if a utility was building something.
Yeah.
You know, CMP was building a.
Yeah, no, no, that it, it may. Well, let's move on. I'm going to get the, the ordinance and read the definition of essential.
Okay. All right, thanks. Um, next is L for mineral exploration and extraction.
That would be NA.
Thanks. M, agriculture.
NA.
Timber harvesting and land management roads.
NA.
Oh, clearing or removal of vegetation for activities other than timber harvesting.
That would be the standard basis statement.
Okay, bring that in. E, hazard trees, storm damaged trees, and dead tree removal.
Yeah, there is going to be some dead trees removed. So it would be the base, standard basis statement.
Okay. Q, exemptions to the clearing and vegetation removal requirements.
That's not applicable.
There are no exemptions.
Right.
R, revegetation requirements.
Would be the standard basis.
S, erosion and sedimentation control.
Again, standard basis.
Okay. T, item T, shoreline stabilization.
That's not applicable.
U, soils.
The standard basis.
V, water quality.
That would be the standard language again.
W, historical and archaeological sites.
The same again.
And X, resource protection.
That would be an A.
And we go on to the next bit is conditions of approval needed to meet required Belgrade shoreline zoning ordinance findings in section 16D. So standard language here, Elliot, has to do with managing stormwater runoff. Which reads managed stormwater runoff from new or expanded structures in accordance with section 15I of the Belgrade Shoreland Zoning Ordinance and the Maine Department of Environmental Protection's best management practices as outlined in Conservation Practices for Homeowners Publication. Such measures are to be put in place prior to building use. Note the standing condition that applies while, unless otherwise noted. So we would have that one in there.
And so, so Peter, I'm not. Well, I, I would defer to the others, but that may not be necessary because Elliot's included a stormwater management system that is part of the basic design, unlike most of the applications we get. I don't know what, Rich.
I, I agree.
And I'm just going to ask Sarah, Sarah, are you in agreement with that idea that because of what's been, and she does, she just said she agrees. So for the planning board members who can vote, who is not me and not Craig, um, since this is a fillable form, this has to do with logistics. Do you want me to just put some words in here that planning board? Planning board. Agrees that this standard condition is not required for this permit.
Perfect.
Efficient.
By the way, George, you're absolutely correct. I was confusing. You get away from this for a while, you forget things, but I was thinking service drop. Service is the. Extension the the power line from the pole to the house.
And oh, Peter, one last thing on the item you just went over and I think it was George's suggestion at the beginning. Note number three on the plan, which of course is part of the record in the approval, says that. All site construction shall be in conformance with main Department of Environmental Protection stormwater best management practices. So I think that's kind of a blanket that covers most anything on this site. In addition to what we've done with. Rip wraps whales and the erosion control mix and the roof infiltration.
Excellent, good point. So what I've written down is I wrote, I wrote it this way. Planning board agrees, this is in reference to the standing condition number one. Planning board agrees this condition is not needed as the application supplied sufficient informa- information to meet the ordinance. Is that is that wording okay or is it more needed?
I think it's okay.
Sounds good to me.
Yep, Elliot, did I miss anything?
No, I think that's fine.
Okay. Are there other conditions we need to note at this time?
Possibly. A question for you, Elliot. There's a note on the drawing that you'll be, you know. Obtaining a DEP certified contractor, but the application doesn't actually provide the name and number just yet. Is that, do I have that correct?
Yes, we don't have it yet.
Okay, so I I think a condition that just says that that'll be should be provided to Gary. Prior to the start of construction would be appropriate in my mind.
So is that a motion, George, for that condition?
Yeah, so I I would make a motion to add a condition that's says provide DEP certified contractor. Name and number prior to the start of construction to the code enforcement officer.
I would second that.
Any more discussion? All those in favor of that condition? So we'll do. George?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Sarah? She said yes. So the way I wrote that condition is provide DEP certified name and number prior to construction. To the code enforcement officer, was that? It was stated?
Yes.
Now, and I'll note, we voted three in favor. Favor, none. Opposed. Great. So we have. Remarks about how the standing condition is not needed. We have a. Separate condition about providing the D certified name and number. CEO prior to construction. Is there anything else that we need to discuss about conditions?
I would suggest we need a condition as Rich referred to earlier. Just to clarify the fact that. We have. The. Site drawing for May eleventh that sort of supersedes the profile drawing. And. You know, I I can read something off to you to see how rich and Sarah feel about it.
Let's go for it.
So. I'll just read it. Note five on the May eleventh, two thousand twenty one site plan regarding maximum height. Of the structure supersedes the height dimensions provided in the profile drawing of the proposed structure.
I think that hits it on the head.
That sound okay to you, Elliot?
Yes, it does.
And Sarah says I'm okay with that. Perfect.
Want me to read that again, Peter?
If you don't mind, yeah.
No, that's, I I mean, I I just wanted to go through it quick so that people could react. So it would re- read note five. On the May eleventh, two thousand twenty one.
Sorry, just one second. Note five on on the May eleven, two thousand twenty one. Site drawing.
Correct.
Supersedes.
Regarding maximum height of the structure. Where the maximum height of the structure. Supersedes the height dimensions.
Yep.
Provided in the profile drawing of the proposed structure.
So I've written it this way, please let me know if I've missed anything. So note five on the May eleven, two thousand twenty one. Site drawing regarding maximum height of the structure supersedes the height dimensions. Provided in the profile drawing of the proposed structure. Are we good?
Yep.
Supersedes, okay, got it. Long word.
When you plant your garden.
Yeah, they're superseds. Alrighty, so we have. Language for a condition and is that is that also a motion to include that?
Yeah, motion to. Apply that standard, apply that condition of approval.
And I would second that.
So it's been motioned and seconded. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of this condition. So George?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And Sarah, I think she just said yes. See a yes there, okay. Okay, so that's it for the conditions. That are at the end of the findings effect. Now it's to the decision portion. Where it reads, based on the above findings affecting in conclusions of law on, I wrote that today's date on five twenty, two thousand twenty one. The town of Belgrade planning board approved by a vote of. And we'll take a vote here. So I can vote, nor can Craig, so I would take this moment to ask the playing board members that can vote to vote. So, George?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And Sarah, she says yes. By vote of three to zero, the shoreline permit application of this the applicant's name. So this is William and Laura. Laura. Elliot, is it feeder or feder?
It is feeder.
Feeder, I apologize. With the above conditions and at the and at a meeting on today's date. Developed these written findings affecting conclusions of law and adopted these find on. Okay. So standard stuff, Elliot, it has been approved and it will be mailed.
Okay, thank you all. It's impressive with your thoroughness and appreciate your help. Bill and Laura feeder. Anxious to move ahead, so the timing is right.
Excellent.
Well.
It's it's always a pleasure to work with you and your company, but.
Yeah.
Thank you, Rich.
It it really is, it really is.
Yeah.
And Sarah says, thank you, Elliot.
Thank you all again. Okay, good night.
Have a great night. Alrighty, we're doing okay. So I think it's great time. Charles, welcome. Good to see you.
Hey, thanks for having me back.
Yeah, you bet. So now we have Charles with us and we have. See, so George, Rich, Sarah dropped, but Craig and I are able to participate. No, Sarah did not drop. She's here still. All right, she's doing double duty, Charles, so she's attending two meetings at once, so.
She's wearing her school board hat at the same time.
Right, I got her email read through it, so it's Sarah, great work.
Great. I am here, she says. Wonderful. All right, so try to save that fillable form. That now back to Charles. So we want to continue discussion of the subdivision ordinance. So you want to help guide us through this part?
Absolutely. I think we are in a very good spot. So the version I sent over fault the following the last planning board meeting, I think over a month now. Or the the four twenty four version is what I'm looking at. So if I had sent out a different one, I think that's. The version I had sent to the board.
Yep.
And so that version kind of goes through a lot of the questions. I checked a lot of the state statute, so everything should be. I say should because we're gonna pass this along to the town attorney as well, who will do a closer look when it comes to state statute. When I did the first passover, so I'm confident with it. And then a lot of George's suggestions and the committee's suggestion. So I would consider this in a final draft form outside of the definition section. Because that's just kind of going through and. What words aren't included in the state statute need to be created. So I'm not too worried about that. I don't specifically think I had any questions in the comments. I'm kind of going through. Now, and a lot of it is just the notes I made are just the changes. So removing certain things, making sure that the. The minor subdivision reflects what we were looking for. And I believe I also added the. Let me just try to find out exactly where this is. This is a very long document.
It is. Charles, may I ask you a question while you're looking for it?
Yes, of course.
So. Cause that was a PDF that you sent, correct?
I think I had sent over a PDF and a Word document.
Okay. Cause I I had saved it locally and had some comments and I just want to make sure I'm finding the right most recent one.
Yeah, I had sent one with a PDF and a doc version, and I think the PDF also could show the the comments, I believe. It could be kind of wrong, but I'm pretty sure the comments were included in there.
That was April twenty fourth.
Great. Say Belgrade subdivision four twenty four. So and then the other thing is I added article eight, final approval and finaling for minor and major subdivision. Kind of made that its own separate article, kept it all in there. And that was the one question I had written down was on page forty five. What do we want for? Seven and eight, because I know in the minor subdivision, we talked about it, we were considering getting rid of. Both. Seven and eight, but I think when we came back to major, we were talking more about keeping both of them. So I, one suggestion I has that we could say failure to commence substantial construction. Of a major subdivision within two years, because I know that was a concern. I'm, I I can't remember, I was I'm looking through my notes right now and I don't see anything substantial here, but I think that was one of the only confusions I had. But everything else going through. I think you going through the, I went through the performance and design standards while the performance guarantees. Yesterday, so I don't have any questions about that. I don't know if anyone else does.
So just one second, if you don't mind, I just want to make sure I make sure I'm answering Craig's question correctly. So. Craig, did you find that document? So so it could be, if I'm not mistaken, it could be Anthony sent it out on the twenty seventh.
Right, that's right.
But the title of the document includes four twenty four.
Right.
So I I didn't want to be confusing, but. I just wanted to say that. Thanks, Charles. Appreciate that. And Rich, do you have that document?
I I I do. Anthony actually printed out a copy for me. I think I got the right one, but. I was just gonna make a comment on that whether seven and eight, if we keep seven and eight. I think clearly we need to have a definition of what. Substantial.
So construction is. Yeah, that's the that's the comment I made too, that we need to figure that out.
So just, let me just air this out a little bit. So do we feel pretty strongly that we want to keep? Both of them? Is that where we are?
Wouldn't they be in conflict with one another if we keep both of them?
Keep both of what? I don't have anything on the twenty seventh season.
Oh, you don't stand by. It would have come from Anthony.
Yeah, I have bright sides from the twenty six and that's all I have.
Okay, stand by. It it went to C R G S N B E at yahoo dot com.
Should be the right one.
Let me try and forward it to you now, Craig, if you don't mind.
Earl, while we're dealing with that, I I have just, you have a comment with a minor question on page five. That reads does this why I like town rules, it has to do with whether or not the planning board. Has the authority to. Amend the ordinance and the standards and the answer is we clearly do not. Only town meeting can.
Yeah, so yeah, that's what I figured, just what didn't wanna. Yeah, I don't know if that was ever like an emergency situation, but I don't.
Yeah.
Imagine it.
Yeah. Since we have town meeting former government. Even the select work, even a select work candidate amend the ordinance.
I had a, I'm glad you brought that up. So I had a comment about that too, so we're on the right track. And Craig said he received, I think, the email or he found at least the documents, whether it was mine or already.
Our page where we are.
Forty five.
And so.
On number seven, what you're saying, if they don't have a substantial start. Within two years, it's over and gone or no and void. And if they don't complete the project within five years, it becomes no and void.
Oh, okay, so they're not in conflict.
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, no, I I didn't read it carefully enough.
So what's completion? I mean. Define completion, because I still have a lot. Over there that's unbuilt, so is that uncompleted?
It would be substant- whatever the definition of substantial construction is, that once that has been achieved and whatever standard definition that is.
Cause I'm holding that for an investment. Cuz I'm holding that for an investment. Um, the, the values that continue to improve the road, they continue to approve everything. So I'm in no rush to sell it. So what's completion? Infrastructure, road, that it, I mean, define that.
I, I don't know. Do we have a definition for that somewhere?
Uh, I don't have one, but I'm sure, I don't have one on hand.
I, I kind of like the wording that Craig just used, where in eight, it would, um, failure to complete substantial construction and, and limit it to infrastructure. Cuz there are a lot of subdivisions that were approved in the late nineteen eighties and the glut that came after that. It was sort of a subdivision bubble, uh, after the, um, uh, there was a moratorium and, and some of those lots have yet to be sold or developed today.
Yeah, I, I, my feeling is it clearly makes sense to have the first paragraph, the second paragraph. We'll need to make modifications on what George and Craig said to continue to keep that one.
So along those lines, so something like, uh, except in the case of a phased development plan, failure to complete substantial construction. And, and how did you have the word about infrastructure?
Uh, of, of, of infrastructure. I mean, maybe then you have to define infrastructure, but you know, I, the, uh, I mean, that's a little clearer, you know, that's, as Craig mentioned, roads, utilities. I mean, there's not much for infrastructure in a subdivision in Belgrade.
Right, it also depends on a lot on what the project is, especially in the case of a major subdivision, but I think it's even harder in a minor subdivision where you could, you could just be subdividing three, you could be making three lots and only putting on two, a structure on one of them. So it depends a lot on the plan, I believe. That's only difficult because I agree, um, with everything that's been said. I'm just trying to figure, like, find out the exact per, what the intent is and how we can kind of shape it in a way for Belgrade.
So, so I like that direction, what we're going in. I think that makes good sense. So if we said something like, except in the case of a phased development, development plan, failure to complete substantial cons- construction of infrastructure?
Uh, Peter?
Yep.
Uh, just, uh, comment I'd have is, I think in my mind, it makes perfect sense in paragraph seven to say failure to commence substantial construction. But I think eight, we need to, I would think that we want to get rid of substantial because it's already. I'm thinking that complete the construction. And then get into the, uh, issue of the, uh, infrastructure, so, uh, somehow tie. Anyway, uh, I just don't see substantial construction being applied to both paragraphs. Uh, I think the paragraph eight needs to talk about completion of the project. At least as far as the infrastructure.
So in eight, except in the case of a phased development plan, failure to complete infrastructure, construction of the subdivision within five years of the date approval and signing of the plan, shall render the plan null and void. Is that the way we want to say it?
Kind of the way I was thinking.
Yeah, I, I would like, I, I like that and I think we could tie it back to the plan as well. Like whatever the, is in the final plan application, like all the infrastructure according to the plan. Just so there's some basis for it. Uh, al- alternatively, one thing I'm thinking is that instead of saying except in the case of a phased development plan, I would just say in the case of a phased development plan, and then I don't know if you really, if we really want the.
I was gonna try, but she wouldn't want to kick in even fifty bucks, I feel it.
I don't know. I don't think that was for, for this.
Okay, had me confused.
So I'm just reading it. So if we did something like, except in the case of a phased development plan, failure to complete, failure to complete infrastructure, construction noted according to the final plan application uh, within five years of the date.
Et cetera.
It could be, do we, would, instead of it having upon determining that a subdivision's approval has expired, would it say in this case, it would be sent back to the planning board for review? So we don't have to be incredibly specific as to what, but saying that in the failure to complete, um, infrastructure in the subdivision, it would of end signing of the plan, it renders it null and void, but there's no review of that. So how I don't know where the enforcement would be for that clause. If you, if that makes sense when I'm, of what I'm saying. Like how, cuz it just becomes. Yeah, cuz I think that I do like the, like the infrastructure cuz failure to complete substantial construction is very limiting. But it also depends on how we define substantial construction. Because these, if we talk about the most significant, um, if it's a, if the substantial to construction is just, it could just be the infrastructure. So that's also why. I'm not, I'm not sure how to wordsmith this.
Infrastructures in place, then the lots can be built on one of. You know, cuz an empty lot is an empty lot.
But what, what's different from substantial construction and infrastructure?
Because.
I just think that i- in a, in a in a definition of substantial construction, um, that would pretty much be the main, that would uncover the main infrastructure. And I guess in the, in a subdivision case, in a major subdivision case, I would include the roads, the pipe, the sewer, the sewage draining, whatever is added, it's all, it's all part of it, because if it does, within five years, I think the purpose is to make sure that the project is coming to an end for the sake of the community, so there's not too much construction for neighbors, there's not too much noise, so that you know that there's a five-year time plan. I think if you only have the infrastructure, then there can just be a vacant building. And if nothing happens, that building can just start, it's just sitting there. So I feel like the intent of this is that within five years, the pro, the project should be almost completed to a point where people can be living there, business can be operated. I think if we only limit to infrastructure, there's a significant chance that you just have an empty building or the framework of a building, and you're just left with that property.
That's all decided by covenances and the, and the, and that should be no one's business but the builders. So that's all decided by covenances in the subdivision. So infrastructure is key. Have the road, have all the D P stuff, the drainage, have everything sitting there. And other than that, it's really no one's business.
I would kind of, uh, agree with Craig to the extent that uh, if somebody creates a subdivision and they don't sell, they only sell one lot out of ten, but the subdivision's been approved, it seems to me that whether somebody's building a house, uh, second house today, you know, a day after the five-year period or uh, third house and six months later. I, I guess I'm not sure that that's something that we need to be concerned about.
Then let's just get rid of an eight then. I feel like if you, if, if we're not concerned with a timeline and it's all on the building property, then why have this at all?
Well, the infrastructure is important, uh, the road, the, uh, because you know, there's different conditions that they need. So infrastructure is important. Get that done, but the empty lots isn't important.
Yeah. I, I, I agree with Craig and, and Rich. Um, the subdivision next door to me is actually an example of this. Um, where the road, the ditching, um, there's no storm drains or anything like that. Uh, it's really just the road, the only infrastructure is the road, the grading and the ditching and, and, um, soil erosion control, that kind of thing. Uh, and, 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 and the turnaround at the end of the, um, road. Uh, it's now a town road, but, uh, at the time it was a private subdivision road. And there was this one lot that, um, the people started the, uh, they built the foundation. And that's as far as they got, and they got, and they went bankrupt. And they had, they and their contractor had no relationship to the developer of the subdivision. They bought the lot, it was theirs. You know, the town, I would, I don't know how the town could uh, act against that particular landowner. Um, or, or I should say more accurately, how the town could hold the, uh, subdivider, the original subdivider, uh, uh, responsible for the fact that these folks had the poor, uh, uh, luck of going bankrupt. So I, 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 I would retain, I would, uh, keep the emphasis on infrastructure cuz and infrastructure is important because that protects, that's like consumer protection for everybody that buys a lot in that subdivision. The worst circumstances, the worst circumstances that used to happen a lot in the sixties and seventies where somebody would sell a lot, but they wouldn't develop the road.
And that's a good point, cuz I think, I think we're seeing, I, I was just looking for the definition of infrastructure, right? We, we don't have one in the current subdivision ordinance. But I think when, when Craig and Rich and George are talking about infrastructure, we're talking about a road that services that subdivision, right? Something along those lines, rather than the, like, a structure like a shell of a home or something. We're not talking about that, Charles, I think, I think.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that, uh, I'm just looking into the legal definition of substantial completion now. Substantial completion is the point at which, as certified in writing by the contracting entity, a project is at the level of completion in strict compliance with the contract. Where necessary approval by public regulatory authorities has been given, the owner has received all warranties and documentation, and the owner may enjoy beneficial use or occupancy and may use, operate and maintain the project in all respects for its intended purpose. Um, so that's one definition that I just pulled up. I was looking at a few, but this seems to be the most accepted standard. So I think there is a legal definition, but if we just put infrastructure, what is that missing? Is my question. And if nothing, we'll just use infrastructure and specifically say roads, buildings, sewage and drainage and things like that, that we can pull from the performance guarantees specifically.
I mean, buildings need to be in there, uh, roads and, um, roads, there's no public sewage in Belgrade yet. Roads and requirements for protection of the lakes, requirements of, you know, whatever they, whatever the planning board deems necessary for for their, um, drainage and they.
So as, as long as the subdivisor is not in violation of town code, is a better way to put it?
No. You know, cuz there's certain things that need to be done on some subdivisions for the drainage. The roads and the drainage is all we're really concerned about. Other than that, they can take twenty years to build this up, to put the houses in there. Who cares?
I, I generally agree with Greg, Craig, uh, I don't know if there's other things, whether there's, uh, possibly lighting or something, I don't know, but for the most part, it's the drainage and the roads that, that I think we want to make sure is done right and done within a certain amount of time. And again, the I guess that's enough for now.
Yeah, so what, what I could do instead of saying, um, instead of the need adding a different in, uh, definition for, we'll probably, sorry, I just lost my place here, forty-five. We could say, except in the case of a phased development plan, um, failure to complete the following and just list the specific things. So we can talk about these specific elements that are required in the final, that in the final plan that should be required, um, at that five-year point. Um, because I think that open space is something that can still be developed afterwards, a public use lot might not be necessary, but just looking at the requirements of the final plan and just pulling out which ones we, that need to be done within the first five years.
Good approach, I think.
Probably the best approach.
Yeah, cuz, cuz that captures what Craig was talking about, that I wouldn't have thought of. That, you know, you want to have, if they're going with, um, stormwater infiltration basins or something like that, because it's a particularly large road or, 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 or it's a commercial subdivision. Uh, you, you definitely want those in place. Uh, you don't want those just, you know, languishing forever. Uh, same with the phosphorus control, so, um, and in the case of a residential subdivision, you certainly want the lots surveyed and, and marked out.
Yeah, well, that's part of, that's another part of the, um, ordinance anyways, that needs to be presented to us in a plan anyways. So the survey and, and that's, that's already presented to us in a plan. So those are all laid out and detailed. So.
What, what page are you on in terms of that list?
May?
No, Charles, uh, you're, you're referencing the list, uh, to the final approval, is it on that same page?
Thirty-seven, thirty-eight and thirty-nine is what I would pull from.
Okay.
Um, but because this section applies to major and minor, we might need to separate it out. So I can see which ones, or we can, I think that section might be best only applied to a major subdivision.
I agree.
I would agree.
Yeah, part agree.
You said that earlier, Charles.
Sarah's here, yay.
Okay, so do we have a direction then on that one? Pretty good?
Just, I just gonna throw something out, you might want to really throw it out. Uh, but I was thinking, uh, the failure to complete substantial construction, would we, could we use a definition that's similar to what we have in other ordinances that talks about thirty percent of the, uh, cost of the project, in other words, the road and drainage system. If in two years they don't whatever these, uh, we deem are the, uh, uh, e- elements of substantial start, that they need to complete thirty percent of that in two years.
Yeah. You know, you know, Rich, I kind of actually like the approach that we're heading on here where it's more easily determined whether you're in substantial, i- i- if there's been substantial progress or construction. Cuz thirty percent, you know, who knows?
I agree, it's, uh, uh, in the show and zoning where it's where we first came up with thirty percent thing and it, it is tough to figure out whether something's been destroyed by fifty percent, forty percent or whatever.
Right. Seems like it could be less than clear. It's this approach that we're talking about. Look at very specific items, right?
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Charles, are you okay for number eight? Cause it sounded like you have a way to yeah, edit that. What was the next page we were going to?
I would like to look at quick clarification. I know we've talked about this previously. Let me just make sure I have it. It's 64. No, not 64. Um, yeah, no, 64. Yeah. Halfway down on technical capacity. Um, so this is the financial technical capacity. And I know we had kind of touched this and left it vague. Um, but I just wanted to make sure, because I remember when I was revisiting this section, I wasn't fully aware of what we had decided. And I don't think I put a note in it. Um, so it's technical capacity and it reads, the applicant shall retain qualified contractors and consultants with the appropriate state certifications to supervise, construct and inspect the required improvements in the proposed subdivision.
What page are you on?
Sixty four.
Oh, I must have a different version. I'm not getting that. Cause I'm on, that's on 63 on my one I've got, but, uh, anyway.
Yeah, it's, uh, 63 online as well, Rich. But that may be just the way I worded it. I, I printed out the version with the comments in it. So.
Yeah, it could, it could be messed up because of that.
Yeah, yeah. But anyway, it's on page 63. If you can't find that, 64.
Yeah, I could have also have like hit enter on my document like six times.
Right.
So there could be a hole in my document. Uh, but I, I think it's fine as is. And I remember we wanted to leave the financial capacity part relatively vague as well.
Right.
And I think this pretty much just gives a little bit of support to the town, at least for liability sakes. Seek, um, the applicant shall retain qualified contractors and consultants with the appropriate state certifications to supervise, construct and inspect the required improvements in the proposed subdivision. So I think that's just for when, and I, I think it also plays into if there is a test or something that is required in this ordinance, that they do follow the appropriate standards that are set out as well.
So by keeping it this sort of generic, it allows us that ability to have that happen without explicitly stating like a specific test rate in here, right?
Yeah. I, I kind of like this language. I mean, it, it, it is generic enough so that if somebody came in with, um, an engineered, uh, a, a, a road designed by an engineer that wasn't a PE, we could reject it because it speaks to the state regulation process and certification process.
Yep. Yeah, I like it. Let's stay with it. Charles, what was next that you had on your mind?
I don't think there was anything major. I'm pretty happy with the, where we're at with this ordinance. Um, and I think what we're now looking for is obviously the appeals board is something that we need to return to. But I think the appeals board is hearing it or have already discussed it or discussing it at their next meeting. Um, so that'll be the final piece at least that's missing from this. Now, I'm, I'm not sure if the planning board had any concerns as well.
So, so I want to turn to the planning board members. I know on a couple of days after you sent this around before I had gone and it made a couple of notes on some things. Some of it was just simple language things. That was basically in agreement with what you had said, you know, you know, using the George language that he had provided in a number of different places to make it consistent throughout. Um, but I guess I'd go back to, to the planning board members, where there's some speci- specific things as people have reviewed this, we thought, hey, we should talk about this, this item. So George, was there anything you had? We have not covered that you'd like to.
I do, uh, but I think it would be best held to the end of our discussion, um, uh, in one case, but, uh, in terms of the definitions, and I, I, I know that's the one remaining, uh, incomplete section, but, uh, one term that I, I think we're going to need to, uh, I, I think it's important to make sure we capture in those definitions is the word impervious. Uh, and there, there, we do have a definition of impervious in our commercial development review ordinance. So maybe that could be just copy and paste.
Okay, good. Rich, did you have anything that you saw that you thought, oh, we should definitely tackle this?
Well, I, uh, one of the things I did is I, I kind of read through at least the first two thirds of it with a fine tooth comb, so to speak. And, uh, there are numerous, uh, things that like, they're minor, uh, but edits of, uh, the, like, instead of saying visit, it said visited or vice versa. I'd like to provide that to, uh, Mr. Tettelman here, uh, uh, so that when you go through it, you, you could, uh, perhaps make those changes if you see appropriate. And a lot of those are not things that Charles has, uh, written, but stuff that's been in the ordinance since day one or whatever. Uh, the other thing I had, you reference, uh, we reference tables. I, I'd assume that you purposely didn't put the tables in this document, uh, table, like it references table 10, 15 dash three. And I will have to make sure that that gets put in there. Another minor item that I had is, I noticed in here, it's, it references tidal waters, coastal wetlands and some other things that that's part of my editing. I think that makes sense. There's, there's no tidal waters in Belgrade and stuff, and we ought to tighten it or not tighten it, but you know, kind of fix that up. Or anyway, that, and I hope it's a comment that, uh, I hope we never have to deal with a subdivision that goes that we have to worry about all those details of, uh, uh, roads and access ways and stuff like that. When, when we get developed that badly that we got a subdivision with 10,000 roads, I'm moving to Greenville.
Yeah.
But I know it's gotta be there, but, uh, it's like, gee, those are pretty, uh, good sized developments. So anyway, I'll end it at that.
Hey.
But I will get this document to, uh, Charles at, uh, some, some point, even if I have to drop it off in Waterville. You are still across from Budamaki, right?
Yes, yes. Uh, right on in Fairfield on 201.
Yeah, yeah. So I have some things that kind of fall in that same category that they're not substantive. Um, they're editorial, not even editorial. There, there's things that, uh, like, for example, there's still a cup, there's at least one reference to, uh, a DEP document that's still out of date. Uh, that kind of thing that I could pass on to you, Charles, not have to take up.
If I can get those, I can just go through them, make sure to check the tables and that's all very minor stuff. And I think the next version will have the, or the next version will have the definitions.
And one other thing, Peter, the, uh, I noticed several places in it, uh, there are underlying blanks that we, that, uh, whether Charles fills them in or we need to discuss them. I don't have them right in front of me, but, um, some of them might be like, I think one of them referenced the number of days and it says blank days and.
Yeah.
This is where there are blanks that need to be filled in.
Right. I think a lot of that's administrative, so I can double check with Anthony or I can just kind of talk with Peter about it. I'm pretty sure those are more like, what does Belgrade want in terms of their administrative procedures? I think it's a lot. I think we covered, we got most of the notices and things like that covered, but there's still definitely some missing parts.
Okay, thanks. Craig, did you have anything that you wanted to bring up? You, you thought, ooh, this is something we need to chat about?
Um, no, no, yeah, but we're going to get a file copy so I can look at a hard copy and and I mean, this isn't the end of it. This is just a copy we're going to get to go through to send out, right? Correct? If we all re-own it.
Yeah. I would say, yeah, it would be a a
Almost last step or something.
Yeah, sort of our first complete draft suitable for somebody else to look at besides the us.
Right, right, right. Exactly.
That's what I was getting at. So, no, I don't have anything at this moment.
Okay. Let me ask, um, Sarah, you, I don't know if you're driving or seated, uh, but I know you've gotten through the budget uh, meeting. Um, if you're hearing us, uh, because I see that you're in attendance, do you have anything you wish to share with us about this, uh, subdivision ordinance at this time?
Well, yes, I've been in attendance the whole time.
Yeah. I know.
Okay, so, 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 uh, I'm driving and I'm, I'm getting just by the town office now, by the Christmas store right now on my way home. And what a beautiful sunset we have tonight. So I will, I will tell to Charles that I'm going to let him off the hook. Because according to a pocket of mine, I've been trying to play God, so I redeem you, Charles. You're fine with me.
He's giving the, the thumbs up of approval was given.
Yeah.
Good. Only Sarah.
Yeah. Discussing the mindset that I have this, this business of being on more than one place at a, at the same time. Not without, no, nobody really knowing, oh, I, I am two places, three places at the same time. So anyways, you're redeemed, Charles.
I gotta tell you, Sarah, I'm impressed. I'm very impressed.
Very. Thank you so much. So, so Charles, the, the only thing that we haven't talked about that I wanted to make sure to mention, and I can send it in an email to you, is really more of an edit, edit, a small edit. But the language that we were talking about with, um, uh, George might have a, uh, typo where it's, uh, one electron copy will be required in addition to paper copies, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, that, that's a small, it's a small version. So we'll just, I'll add the IC. Electrons are too small.
Yeah, yeah. So thank you. That, that I had no other things to bring up for you tonight.
I, it looks like I copied, um, George's language and I copied it eight times. So I will fix that.
Okay. Thanks.
Eight times.
Yeah, because we, yeah, we saw it in a number of places there, which is all good. Um, okay. So for, for the planning board, we've gone through a number of things we've, we've have some language things and some suggested things having to do with like tense or grammar. I know Rich had some ideas. Talked about these minor edits. Uh, is there anything else we need to talk about? George, did you have another item?
I, I do, but it, it, it's, um, not specific to the ordinance. Um, it, um, well, let me just get it out and then you tell me if, if you want to talk about other things first before we get to it. And, and it's a suggestion I've made before, um, but I, I thought I'd give it one more college try and, and that is, um, if this ordinance gets adopted, would we be in a position? And should we be in the, uh, uh, eliminate the 1978 multi-residential dwelling ordinance? There's a quite, there's a lot, a lot of overlap.
I don't know what the 1978 multi-dwelling ordinance is.
Yeah. Well, George, the only thing I would ask, um, sorry for just putting in would be what does that ordinance accomplish that isn't in this subdivision ordinance?
Unfortunately, I had sent out an email about this probably a month and a half ago and, uh, and I didn't, I wouldn't, I didn't think ahead to, um, look, get that up. Uh, but, um, the, really, the only thing I could tell that that ordinance would regulate that this wouldn't, would be like two unit apartment buildings versus three unit apartment buildings. That, that was the impetus for that ordinance, I believe. I mean, I wasn't in town yet. Uh, I didn't come until a couple of years later, but, um, the, uh, there was a, um, handful of apartment buildings developed right around that time. And I think that this, that ordinance was a reaction to it, to that phenomena. And the subdivision ordinance, I, I don't even know, I assumed Belgrade had one at that point in time, but it probably didn't have much in it for me. And so it, it's just been out there languishing on the town website. Um, and I, it just seems like maybe we could get rid of it. It seems like chaff to me. If, I, what I could do, if, what I could do, Charles a- a- and Peter, um, if this would be helpful to frame this better is that the email I'd sent out previously lays out what some of the differences are. I could resend that to everybody.
It would, it would be helpful to resend it, I think, George, because I don't remember seeing it.
Well, you know, Rich, I may have not sent it to all the board members. I might've sent it to Anthony, maybe you, Peter. And I can't even remember if I sent it to you, Charles.
Yeah, I just looked it up, um, and I must've just kind of looked at it and they're like, we'll bring, we'll come back to this. We never did. Um, I'm just reading through, I'm, I have, I have no comment right now. Uh, I just, I'd like to look at the ordinance first, but again, um, I can just look for the overlap between the two. I'm not sure. I'll comment on if it should be removed or not.
Yeah. Um, why, why don't I resend that email? And, um, I, I could at the same time send a link to the ordinance. I mean, it's right on the town website. Yeah, it's not a long ordinance. It, it's like three pages or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Be honest with you, George, I didn't know we even had that.
Well, probably most people don't. Um, the, um, it, it, when I was on the planning board back in the late eighties, it, it came up because we approved a couple of apartment buildings.
Yeah. I wouldn't be surprised if part of that reason for that also, I remember when we first moved here, there was a proposal for a multi-unit, uh, apartment building next door with yellow houses next to me.
Oh, oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, there was actually a petition going around to halt the thing and they backed off.
And, and perhaps if Anthony were to review, review this, uh, to look at whatever the differences are, should there be, you know, a note passed to the attorney to say, hey, are we good to get rid of this other one? That could help.
Well, you know, that's a good point, Peter, a real good point that when the, that could be a question posed to the, uh, town attorney.
Yep.
Uh, and not just rely on my sort of cursor review. Um, but I'll say it out. And I mean, it, it's sort of a postscript to it, but we have a tendency or I don't, I, not Belgrade so much, but it, there can be a tendency to adopt ordinances, but not get rid of the ones that are to, so antiquated, they have absolutely no value.
Right. And I want to mention too, George, that according to what I'm seeing on the on the front page of the subdivision ordinance, it's like the first subdivision ordinance was adopted in 88. So we may not have had, if that's accurate, we may not have had a subdivision ordinance in place when that other multi-dwelling one came.
Yeah. So I've worked on that ordinance and there was one just prior to that, but I don't know when it was enacted.
Oh, okay. So, so the listing does not cover anything before.
Yeah. I guess that got lost in the.
Yep.
Above.
And that's a very good point.
And then the other item was, uh, at what point would it be appropriate, uh, I, I would like to suggest that we have a public informational meeting as we've done in the past with other ordinances, because it would be an opportunity for the, to have a little bit of a dialogue with the various interested parties in town and, and you know, whether from the realtors to some developers to, you know, Seven Lakes Alliance, et cetera. I know Craig has mentioned in the past that he has somebody that he wants to have review this. That would be an opportunity for them to come forward with any suggestions they might have, because once, once we get down the road and we get to the public hearing, it, it's all over. You know, we can't make any changes if somebody comes up with a really good suggestion.
So, so I'm curious, I'll just toss it out there. If after we get these revisions that we're talking about where we have a, have a pretty good revised draft subdivision in the not-too-distant future, is, is June a realistic timeframe to have any this informational session, do you think? I mean, or is that too soon?
I think that's a little too soon, beginning of July or something.
Be, I'm thinking, Charles may have some comments on that in terms of when he can actually get a document together.
Correct, yeah.
Right, right, exactly.
Peter, I, I have a suggestion.
Go ahead.
And that, that, that would be that maybe we should host that in August, if it is not too late for that. Just because June we're having that budget vote here, so we're gonna ask people to come and vote. I'm not sure we wanna mix both of them close together or we wanna put them apart. I just, I just thinking about that. Not sure that they didn't so much promotion in the town. To be a good idea. I'm not sure, I'm just bouncing my thoughts.
So Sarah, I think we caught most of that. It was a little bit broken up as you were speaking. As I think my, my conversation has been broken up at times. But I think I heard you say maybe later in the summer. I don't wanna push.
Can I try it again?
Sure.
All right, so, so what I would say is that instead of doing in June, doing later in the summer, just because we have a the budget voting coming up in June. I just don't know if that's, you know, in the middle of the summer and people are dying to get out of the houses because of COVID. Doing such, hosting that in June will be well attended. As it is, I'm not sure that the that the budget meeting, our budget, our voting session will be at two attended as well either, so.
It's a possibility there'd be a conflict there and, you know, I appreciate what you're saying, you know, you wouldn't wanna have too much conflict or too much at once. I think we'd be wise to not have this delayed, right? Getting the information out to these interested parties so that should there be some issue that we bring that up earlier, not too late. As George mentioned, once we get to the hearing, it's basically all over, but the crying, so.
Peter, we need to be cognizant of, of the timeline we have to stay within if we're gonna get this to the voters in November and you know, I haven't done the math working backwards, but, but historically, that's always meant getting it to the select board for them to post to public hearing in late August. And so if we're gonna hold a public informational meeting and allow enough time to maybe make some changes based on what we hear, we, we can't wait that late. Now, Sarah is exactly right that, you know, we may hold this and nobody comes. I mean, that's happened before and we held it, did one for, you know, where I mean, none, we don't, it isn't like we get packed houses by any means, that's for sure, but the, I don't know, i- it's, it's a process suggestion. The, I mean, there's other ways to skin this cat, you know, I mean, you could put it out for written comment. And, and so we could I don't know, you know, at the municipal level of whether that works or not, like it does at the state level. You know, where would a realtor actually submit written comments? I, I don't know what the answer to that question is. That may be outside their comfort zone, but the I, I do think though, we, we're at a point where we could send this to the appeals board right off. And that way, the next time Charles comes, if any of their members want to attend, they could.
Right, and I, from at least my process, which if, if I can contribute my process, what I'm envisioning is that after the next version will include the definitions. I believe it'll have the first draft of the appeals board section, because they'll send over their comments to me. But if we do want, if we want their feedback back, if we want their their feedback included in the next draft, I would need that within the next week or so to make sure that I get that version out and ready to go. And that draft will hopefully include all of the errors, typos, electrons and things of that nature. So at least what I'm envisioning for the next draft would be a complete, a fully complete document. And again, I think we will have some holes, but I don't think there will be much content debate, cuz I think we've kind of crossed that path. The only thing that I can imagine would be at least from the planning board perspective, because of course, other people might have the public comments might bring up things we haven't thought of. But would be the appeals board. That would be the only thing where it's like we need to really hash that out.
The, the other thing in terms of timelines to consider is I assume we still are committed to amending the commercial development review ordinance with regard to solar farms. And you know, and that's on a similar timeline.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So when, when will we begin that, when will Charles have that ready for us?
Well, we haven't even started.
No, the, this subdivision. Next draft of the subdivision.
Yeah, that just depends on when I get everyone's comments. I ha- I have already have a stuff, I have a list of things I can already start doing, which I will. But if I wanna take everyone's comments from the typos to just kind of that element, then I would need those within the next week, cuz I believe I could get it done by next Friday. But that requires getting everything. And the appeals board as well. I have not.
So what do we, what if, what about our meeting in the first of July? The ma- first meeting in July, is that a good meeting for an informative meeting?
Well, Craig, I think you're on the right track. I, I didn't know if it might be the first meeting or the second meeting in July.
Well, the second meeting would be better, actually, but I didn't know how quickly you wanted to go with it.
May- maybe I'll just suggest this, could we try to work towards having an informational meeting on the second meeting in July, which would be July fifteen by my calendar? Would that be acceptable to allow us time to go back and forth with? Charles?
Yeah, no, that, that sounds reasonable to me. The, I mean, that first week in July, you know, it's tough to get people to show up at anything. Yeah, no, unless we start offering beer, free beer.
Yeah, there's probably
Then that might not do it with the people on vacation.
Yeah, right.
So if we can get this out to us in the beginning of June, then yeah, the second meeting in July, July fifteenth. I agree with that.
The same for that.
So any editorial type stuff we have, we should really get to Charles, say by next Wednesday or something like that.
Yes. Yes. And give this poor man in a, a chance to, to respond without being at the eleventh hour.
Yeah.
So. Okay, so we kind of have a game plan, looking for having an informational meeting with towns folks on the second meeting in July. So we continue to revise, edit, come back. There's an appeals board process part that will take place. Fill in a bunch of gaps and so on. And then hopefully by the time we get to mid-July, we'll, we'll be kind of in a groove with this. We'll hopefully have maybe an executive summary of some of the changes that we could then describe to anybody, whether it's the select person or like my mom or whoever might have interest in it and say, okay, this is how it's different. So people can start thinking about, are they in favor or are they opposed to these these changes we've made?
Yeah, well, and we'll have to have something like that ready when, when we present it to the select board, cuz
Right.
That addressed a lot of questions in past ordinance rewrite that they raised.
Yep, and I'm thinking, George, are you thinking the same thing that if we have the public informational session in mid-July, would we be talking to the select persons after that? Which would have incorporated some input?
Yeah, I, 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 I think, and that's how we've done it in the past, and I think that's kind of how we have to do it.
Me too. I, I wouldn't wanna go out of order, so, so that would get us into probably late, early August sort of timeframe with the select board and then go for it, then schedule a hearing.
I mean, at least one time, it might have been the commercial development review ordinance when we redid that. I think a number of select board members actually showed up for that, so.
Yeah.
I think Michael Barrett did. I can't remember, somebody else, maybe Ricky, I, I can't remember now.
Yep. Okay, so we have a general timeframe for some things to work on. Is there anything else we would want to convey to Charles tonight? I know we've kept you a long time, Charles. I really appreciate your time.
No worries.
I, I guess, I'm not bringing this up to Charles, but as a point, as I was reading through it, which I should have done many times before, but I noted that there's a requirement in our ordinance said if you're having a subdivision, the houses have to be built in the woods versus a field. And my, you know, it's kind of, there's two ways of looking at that. There's the visual aesthetic value of you get a nice field, now there's a bunch of houses in it. And then there's the other issue of trying to conserve woodland and stuff or whatever, and we're telling people to build in the woods in terms of wildlife habitat, not that there aren't, what isn't wildlife habitat in the field, but I just found that a little bit food for thought, I guess, is you're better off building in the woods or building in the field. Anyway, that's not a comment for Charles to go ponder.
Yeah. That's a good point, though. Probably not just an either or situation, right? There probably could be better language to address it, you know, in general. Okay. For Charles?
I, I usually wanna say thank you for all the good work and, and thank you for working with me today on my double commitment thing. I really appreciate it.
Yes, of course, of course. Thank you. Charles, thanks so much for tonight. I know you've been a real pleasure to work with and I know that sometimes we have, we get into some details that maybe we could get out of, so thank you for being patient with us.
It's okay. I mean, I like, I do play devil's advocate too, cuz I don't wanna, I don't wanna miss anything in these. So just trying to consider everything is how it goes, but I think we're in a really good spot.
Okay, super duper.
Yeah, have a good night. I'm gonna head out.
Okay, thanks, Charles. See you. So thanks, everybody. I think from my jet, look at the agenda, that the next thing we have to discuss are the minutes from
May sixth.
May sixth. Does everybody have them? So Rich, you got that printout or?
I'm looking at it on my tablet right now.
Okay, that's a great. George, you okay?
Yeah, I'm good.
And Craig, do you have those minutes? Near the end of that package that Julie sent around. Or Sheila, I can't recall who did it, but. Okay, and, and Sarah, do you have those minutes?
I do.
Okay, awesome. Let's take a few minutes to go through them. And, and Craig, just so you know, if I'm reading this correctly, it does not list you as present in May sixth. Were you there?
I believe so. I missed the last meeting. That's the only meeting I missed.
So, so that was May sixth, so having said that, you, you don't, you don't need to fret over those, cuz if you weren't there at the last meeting, then you shouldn't vote on, you can't.
That was the last meeting, right? May sixth?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
Yes, I wasn't too.
Yeah, no worries. If you don't mind, we'll just take us a few minutes and we'll get through this.
Yep.
Okay. George and Rich and Sarah, have you had a chance to review those minutes?
Yep.
Any, any edits?
I get a couple.
Okay.
And it's, I'm not sure it's an edit or asking Sarah and George if they agree. The shoreline, item number B, shoreline application. The discussion and policy determination for definition of height of a structure. I'm not sure whether we really weren't doing that specifically to William and Laura Feeder's application as we were to a policy. And I'm, I'm thinking that it could be deleted from the words applicant owners down to demolish and replace existing structure. And then the, basically, the discussion is basically the motion that George made. I don't, I don't know if we wanna do it. It was related to the feeder application, but it wasn't the feeder application that we were dealing with and
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree. I, I think you, the agenda Yeah, no, I, I, I agree. I, I think Ju- the agenda had, had the same as kind of mistake, error, uh, unnecessary language, whatever you want to call it.
Probably the most appropriate, unnecessary.
Yeah. Uh, and so I, I agree that should be, uh, eliminated because it was really a standalone, uh, uh, agenda item, not to mention it's, uh, the order of these agenda items is out of order. You know, out of or, out of the order that we took them, because that was, that was the first item that we took up.
Yeah.
Uh, and the, um, and the, uh, application in Mark Thibodeau was the second, and the third was, uh, Adam Gardner's application.
Good, good memory, George. Our good notes or whatever. So anyway, well, I would suggest and, and, uh, at least George agrees. I don't know about Sarah, but to eliminate the reference to William and Laura Feeder as an application. Uh, the other thing I had, uh, is down below on the second page, uh, just before item number three says waiting for the outcome of the Tuesday meeting between Sean, town manager, and I believe it's probably Gary, uh, the code officer, is the third person. I'm not positive, but I think that's who it was.
Yeah, you're right.
I, I think there was a copy and paste thing there because the line above that, Rich, says Augusta Road currently operating as Belgrade canoe and kayak. Here, code enforcement officer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think you're right.
So it's just, that, that needs to be located after and.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
So, so Julie, did you catch those, those items?
She's not here.
I did catch it and I did get the notes from George. I just haven't had a chance to fix them yet.
Yep. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
We'll have a couple more small things, I think.
Okay.
Peter, um, as Julie just mentioned, I, I had, uh, sent her some, um, suggested changes just because they were more substantial and, and, uh, um, and, uh, for example, uh, in the item we just discussed, uh, the policy determination of height of structure. Um, the, uh, I had suggested some language to kind of put meat on the bone as to what we actually discussed, so that it isn't just the motion that shows up in the minutes. Um, there is another way to kind of skin that cat though, and that is to just add something that says, you know, the, um, discussion docu- the document discussing the subject is attached, attached it to the minute, Richard's memo to the, to the minutes, that be an alternate way of, uh, and maybe easier way than the verbiage that I, um, provided Julie earlier, you know, and less work for her. Um, but with regard to Adam Gardner, uh, which is A, um, uh, there was a part of the decision, we, we decided not to, um, add a, a condition of, a special condition of approval on the ba- on the premise that, um, the information would be reflected in the minute. So I think some language needs to be added there. Um, and the, and I'll just read to you what I suggested to Julie so that we can discuss it. Um, and that way she has some, um, guidance from the whole board and not just me. Uh, the wa- added, uh, what I suggested for an addition was after, uh, uh, you know, lot 14 purpose non-conforming lot, non-conforming structure. After that, and, uh, discussed with applicant Adam Gardner that maximum height as shown in the revised site plan exceeds a 25 foot maximum in the ordinance. Adam agreed that the building construction would be altered, so the height from the deck foundation elevation to the house peak would not exceed 25s, uh, meet, exceed the 25 foot standard. Core discussed whether a special condition of approval was needed, but decided since Adam had committed on the public record to achieving the 25 foot maximum height, a condition was not needed. Adam clarified that there would be 6,000 square feet of cleared area, not 5,000 square feet.
Sounds accurate to me.
So Julie had that language in front of her and, and it's just a question of whether others think it's appropriate to add that.
I, I would agree, George. Um, well done. I think it should be added in there. That way it's clear. Um, um, in the minutes. Do, I would say I'm in favor of that adding.
I, I would be too.
Yeah, okay.
Now, I'm good with all the suggestions given. I just listening.
Okay, so proposed amendment, uh, to those. George, and I know you had other language that you sent to Julie. It sounded as though, is there anything else you wanted to share with us tonight about things?
Um, no, I, I guess not.
Yep, okay. Um, so, uh, does anybody else have any other edits? Sarah, do you have any other suggested edits?
I'm good.
Okay. And, and so Julie, I just want to thank you very much for doing the, the minutes, um, and crafting them in such a way that, that they make sense. It's not an easy task. We really appreciate it. And I really like the idea that we have draft on the minutes that are sent out. So that way anybody who sees it knows it's a draft. So if there are edits proposed, if they are passed, revised, this would be not drafted, be finalized. So thank you so much. I think we're, we're heading in the right direction. So thank you.
And we're glad you recovered.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. All right, um, any more edits for, that we can pass along into Julie? If not, I would entertain a motion to, um, to, uh, to approve the amended, uh, or revised minutes.
I would make a motion that we approved the minutes as a remended, uh, the, that's the May 6 person or whatever met, not version, but May 6 meeting, uh, with the, uh, amendments that added.
I'll second.
Thanks. Motion moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Hearing done, we'll do a roll call vote. So those, uh, so George?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
And I'm in favor. So that's four in favor, none opposed. Um, so thank you very much, Julie. Um, at this point on the agenda, we're through the, the kind of regular sort of stuff for town business. I want to just check in. Hey, Gary, is there any information that, that you've heard of lately that you want to share with us?
I can't think of anything. I, I do have a question.
Okay.
The reason that only three of you could vote on the shoreline application was what?
We were the ones that were at the meeting, the special meeting. It was me, Sarah and George. Nobody else was in attendance.
Okay. Uh, I guess my comment is, I don't recall the planning board ever having any members have to abstain because they failed to go to the site visit.
It wasn't just a site visit.
Okay.
It was a, uh, a previous meeting where we went in detail through the application.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah, okay.
And, and Gary, that was in, in an effort to try to unclog the log jam of stuff that was piling up for our planning board. So.
We do, we do have a log.
We accomplished that, but.
Yeah, we do have a log jam.
Okay.
Well, we got a few more off the list, I guess. And one. So the next meeting, I know that we have Tyler Evans subdivision. And we have a shoreline application.
Gary?
Yes.
Uh, 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 I'll, I'll put this kind of through Peter if it's okay. But, uh, we just received, uh, and maybe the agenda's all formal and can't be modified at all, but, uh, we dealt with, was it, was it Thibodeau or who's, who's the guy, George, that wants to move the shed? Uh?
Oh, Thibodeau, yeah. I think it was.
It wasn't Thibodeau, uh, a different name, um, because he, he obviously went to CMP and, uh, and was told he had, he couldn't, he, it was too close to the power line.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll figure out that name. Do you want that on the agenda?
Well, it seems to me that we could take care of that fairly quickly.
Okay.
Question I would have to him is he's got, is, you know, where are the cleared openings? And are you cutting more trees, uh, to relocate it or whatever? That would be, I think, my only question, uh, that.
We'll find that application and we'll address that, that with him.
Good to get him off the.
Yeah. Yep. I think that's it for me.
Okay, thanks, Gary. Appreciate.
Excuse me?
I have, I'm still talking from the car. I have those notes in my, in my house, in that notebook in my house. I think it was that, that was the guy from New Hampshire, I think.
Okay, so I'll take a look.
I can, uh, I don't know if I, you have an email or something like that. I can send it to you.
Okay, please do.
Thanks, Sarah. Thanks, Gary. Um, Julie, anything that you, that, uh, has come across your desk that we need to know about?
No.
No, okay. All right. That's it for tonight. Um, Julie, we're happy that you're with us, happy that you're recovering. Keep going.
Happy that you're with us.
Yeah.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Yes. And I think we can call it a night. Um, so we're out of here at 8:06. Not bad. Um, for us, that's not bad. All right. Thanks, everybody. I'll stop recording and then we'll, we'll end the meeting. So thanks, everybody.
All right. Good night, all.
Right, yeah.